Good morning and welcome back to the live show of the Action School Committee, the first one in a long time. It's nice to be together in a way besides just Zooming. And we welcome you to our June 9th School Committee meeting, 2020, at 9 o'clock in the morning. And we will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna move over there since we have an empty chair and then I won't come back to any of you.
That's all right.
Okay, so do we have some adjustments to the agenda?
We will have an executive session and we will have it here in the library. The librarian and anybody working in this area will not be in here this morning. So we can use this for executive session versus the conference room, which is being used. I recommend that the chair take us into a recess when we're done with the agenda so that we can take a break and you can say hello to the staff because we have them here for professional development. Then when we will come back from that recess, you would take us out of recess and take us into executive session here in the library.
And that's your only adjustment?
That's the only adjustment.
All right, any comments from the public?
Yes, I was wondering if Kim could tell us what the savings would be if we have, you know, the different deductibles on that.
So basically, well, there I'm not absolutely positive because we had done all our training. So we have some incentives that are coming back for our liability insurances and stuff. But currently, we have a thousand on one of our insurances. We don't have any deductibles on the other. I don't know exactly how much of a decrease we would get. I think they're just looking to see if anybody is, you know.
Well, what are you recommending? It says like a thousand, two thousand.
I would go with a thousand. I would have a thousand going all the way across all our policies. I wouldn't go with 5,000, but I'd definitely go with a thousand. And then we know that we have a thousand dollar deductible with every one of our policies.
So is this coming under public comments or does this come under consent?
She just wanted to say something. But I was gonna ask you the same thing. If you look at your homeowners policy and your automobile policy, a lot of people don't realize you can have high deductibles and the cost of the policy will cost you less. So that's one of the, I think this is a good idea. Now, if we can withstand 1,500 and still be able to cover some real damage, that would be good too because then the policy cost should be down, right?
Well, we have options of a thousand, 2,500 and 5,000. I would pick a thousand.
You think that's?
Yeah, but.
We don't have anything now, right? I mean, you're paying the full cost.
We have, no, we have one part of our policy that is under a thousand, has a thousand dollar deductible. That's like the crime thing, whatever. So this is about the property having a thousand dollar deductible, so.
But can we withstand higher so that it would drop the policy cost?
Yes, that's the whole point, yeah.
I know, but you're saying a thousand dollars.
She's saying what she recommends and.
I know, but I'm just saying the more, you know, this happened years ago. I found out and the agent will never tell you that. You know, I had to sit down and go over and say, you know, if I drop this, but sometime it's not worth the other $10 drop in cost.
I'm sure they send it all in writing now, right? What you pay if you take this deduction, what you pay if you take that deduction. So it's all written out there, correct?
So the choice was this. The only thing with a really high deductible, that means it comes out of your operating if you have.
That's what I'm saying.
So you might not have that. So a thousand dollars is probably doable. And that's why I was saying I would recommend a thousand dollar deductible. It's just that to be able to change the deductibles, I need a school committee vote. So that's, and that's on the agenda down.
No, you would know the money better than we would. So a thousand dollars, you know, I think that's better because, I mean, a lot of people don't realize that about their homeowners and automobile policies.
Yeah.
Check it out.
Okay, any other comments that are actually from the public?
Sorry.
Well, you're public.
You are, you are. Okay, let's move on to number three, which is our consent agenda. And I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Linda. Any discussion? All in favor? Five and oh. Okay, any other, let's see. Superintendent's report is not.
Just have a couple of things I'd like to update the public and the committee on. This report had a lot of information to update you on the last 12 weeks with the pandemic and how we've been doing remote learning. Basically, the staff is back today, you'll have the chance to see them. But school ended for students Friday, the 5th. And we had a reverse parade yesterday that was a lot of fun. Instead of, you know, you go to a parade, you sit and they go by you. We sat and they went by us. So the staff was out there with signs and Whiskers was in a golf cart with Andy and ripping around their property. And there was a handful of kids that came with the PTG. It was kind of fun to see them, they were out on the lawn. And PTG gave away some gift certificates to Teds. And then the bus drivers at the end of the parade had real ice creams that they had purchased to give to kids in their cars. And the whole idea was come in the circle and see your teachers and honk and wave. And I was working traffic out front and I could hear the, I could hear the excitement from way out front. It was fun. And just about, I think Mike reported we're probably 75 to 80% of the staff, of the parents came through with their remote learning materials. So they did the parade and then they went over to the bus area. And there would be people there to take the bags of what we need back, mostly the devices and books. And then we took those and Mike organized all that. They wanted to pick up trucks and then organized by cohort in the science lab. And that's where they got their ice cream from, the bus drivers, and headed out from there. But I think every vehicle stopped by because I was right in the middle of the traffic, so I was kind of moving cars. It was slow and they had their windows down. Kids are in the back waving and every parent was like, thanks, this is really, I mean, they sincerely were like, thank you. And some people even dressed up their cars, thank you ASC Rock. It was cool. It was cool because it's weird, we closed schools, you know, 12 weeks ago and we just kind of left and there's a core group of us that have been in and out of the building. But we haven't seen our kids. That's the business we're in, right? So it was nice, yesterday was really nice.
I, I, I drove through too. I really enjoyed driving through the circle and seeing all the, all the staff had their Wildcat shirts on and they had all kinds of signs. And it was, it was very, it was very positive and very uplifting, I'm sure, for kids and parents. Yeah, I enjoyed it.
Great day, just perfect day too.
I didn't get the ice cream, but.
We didn't have to drop off a computer, that's why. Graduation is tonight. We have an approved plan for graduation. It's kind of a blend of what they would call a drive-in, which some high schools are doing, going to a drive-in or drive-through, you stay in your car, to an in-person. So there's kind of rules for both. So we had a blend and got it approved. So we're having the kids, the eighth graders, will be social distanced. They will be wearing, even outside, they will be wearing masks. That was one of the approval guidelines. We had to follow, to get it approved, we have to follow guidelines. And one of them is even though you're outside. So Judy Washburn made these really nice Wildcat masks that all match, right? Yeah, so that was kind of cool. The kids will be dropped off at 5:15 and we'll gather here. We'll have staff to make sure it's gonna be hard for them to hug each other because they haven't seen each other either. So we've already met with the eighth grade, I met with them, I met with them with the team. They get it, they're in great shape. We're gonna have them march out to the field, to the baseball field, to pump in circumstance. And we've actually set up, Andy set it up, so that we're gonna have every family that has a graduate in a car on the baseball field. And the cars need to be six feet apart. And we're gonna run a graduation from the field. And then we're gonna let people drive out. And the cool part at the end is, you know, like when, as, so you know, this is the class 2020, they can all honk. But as each graduate leaves, also name them as they go so that, you know, because we're not doing the typical march out. So, and then they'll just leave from there. So we're looking forward to that. And the Sheriff's Department, we're gonna have a deputy just onboard at the gate because it's one car per, you have to have a ticket to get in. And it's, 20 cars, we have 20 cars?
21.
21 cars, we've got 21 guests coming, so 21 cars. So the smart person's gonna bring an RV and bring the whole family, right?
I'll pull in with the RV.
Or a pickup truck. How about a pickup truck full?
Well, you gotta be inside, though.
Well, you gotta be inside?
Yeah, you gotta be inside your car.
Well, they have pickup trucks with cabs.
We could do that, stuff it full of family, yeah. Aunt Jane came in from California and referred her to the back of the truck. That doesn't seem very fair. So that's tonight at 6 o'clock. And I just have two other updates that I received. One I anticipated, the other one I didn't since I sent you my report. And that is Mary Ellen Blodgett, who I think you knew was probably, was looking because she bought a house, she bought her parents' house up in like Fairfield. So she needs to find another job in that area. And her contract's on the way. So we suspect that I'm gonna get a written resignation from Marion Blodgett probably today and she's in the building. I'm just waiting to hear from the superintendent that she is actually gonna get that contract because she's not resigning until she gets the contract, which I advised her to do. Do nothing until you get your contract. So I suspect this will be the last time you'll see her is today. And the other one is Travis, Travis Corcoran, found a perfect job for him. Travis has really tapped my background in wilderness education and outdoors and has been very, very interested in, there are no such things really as wilderness educators in public school. But he is going to be joining a charter school, a public charter school in North Conway, that they want him as a music educator and an outdoor educator. So can you imagine that? Like, I've never heard of such a job and it was just meant to be for him. So we wish Travis well. And he has given me his letter of resignation, so I'll be looking for a music teacher. Okay, so you'll know that when you see Travis today. And that's all I have for update.
Okay, do you have any, any other questions or discussions for anything on the consent agenda? Anybody?
Oh, how about the paving? Did somebody put in a bid or anything for paving?
That's scheduled for sometime this month.
Oh, yep, this month?
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
I mean, do you have any pieces of paper that somebody's interested?
Oh, yeah, we.
Oh, you have, oh, okay.
Yeah, the bid was awarded and it's all.
Signed, sealed and?
Ready to go.
Signed and delivered, but not sealed yet, huh?
Waiting for a phone call for him to let us know when he's gonna arrive and repave the parking lot.
Awesome, good. All right, how about committee reports? Do we have any committee reports? Do we have anything new from the long-range planning committee or the policy committee?
No.
Nope? Okay, and I don't see any old business here. I think we've pretty much covered that. So that brings us to number seven.
Six.
Us, isn't?
No old business.
Six, yeah, there's no old business, is there?
No.
No. Okay, so then you got, that brings us to number seven.
Oh, you switched old business to new business. But I didn't change that.
All right, okay.
Just the ones out on the.
So new business is our nomination of three new teachers that John has.
Yeah, let me, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in reverse order because we have Troy here with us, so we'll go with Troy last. So we have three new teachers that we, that I've offered contracts to and we need to nominate and support them today. Miranda Mitten is going to be our first grade teacher. And Miranda's, Miranda and both Ally, who's our, the teacher, are working today. Miranda's gonna be teaching first grade and working in Chad's cohort. She comes to us with a lot of energy and a lot of excitement. I'm gonna have both Ally and Miranda meet with you in our first meeting in, probably in September, maybe the August meeting, I'll see how, it depends on what we schedule for summer meetings. But you'll definitely be meeting the new teachers, you know, as school opens. Ally Hobbs is going to be in our fourth grade group, co-teaching with Troy. Ally actually interviewed for the first grade position and we were so impressed with her. She was also very interested in fourth grade. So we had a long conversation about the difference between first and fourth grade, as there is, and she's all in. And so with Troy here, you can see that Patty's cohort, you know, the legendary Sandra Packard's, the only one there that has had, you know, you got, you got Ms. Goodail, but she's been with us for a year.
One year.
So a lot of our new teachers are landing right in the middle right now. So it's kind of nice that Patty's doing the coaching because it'll also give her a little more freedom to be the cohort leader, which will help, I'm really happy that's the way it lined up so that she can support and help our, our new teachers. So finally, I have Troy here with me today who was available. And Troy comes to us. I'm gonna let him give you a little bit of his background and introduce himself. And then you can either take the nominees as group or one by one for your vote. Welcome, Troy.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So originally, I'm from New Jersey. I went to college, I mean, I went to UNE and I studied elementary education. And currently, I'm getting my master's in special ed from USM. And I just finished my first year of teaching in the Bedford School District. I was a fourth and fifth grade special education teacher for the behavior program. And now I want to transition into general ed.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Troy's background in special ed, I said to him, every student, every teacher that goes to the mainstream classroom will benefit from working in a behavior room. So he was in a behavior room, a special ed in Bedford. And you can imagine that, you know, you deal with some, some pretty tough behaviors, would be my guess. And if you can, if you can do that when you go to the mainstream classroom, that gives you a toolkit and positive reinforcements to help turn around some of those behaviors. So we're really, really looking forward to Troy joining the team with his, with his new toolbox and skills and have them right there with that fourth grade class. And we've already divided up the classes. So I'll have a class roster for you at the end of the week and what your kids will be, because it's a big group, it's two classes. So we've divided up Ally and your kids and we now know who you have.
Okay. All right, so now we need to know the pay scale and the amount.
Yeah.
That's how we're gonna have.
Did you give it to me on here?
I did.
Oh, I thought, you turned it over so it was blank. I'm like, oh, she's giving me no paper. I said, hey, yeah. So Troy's right here, he's a bachelor's with two at 41, 141. BA two, 41, 141. Allison Hobbs, a BA one, 39, 841, a BA one at 39, 841. Miranda Mitten, same, BA one at 39, 841. BA one at 39, 841. Thank you, Kim, for getting that to me.
So Allison and Miranda, this is their first teaching, Joe?
Yeah, they've had, they've had other kinds of educational experiences outside of their student teaching. But yeah, so we've got, yeah, we've got.
Troy's all already got a.
He's already got some under him, yeah.
Year under his belt.
It's exciting for us because I've had very little turnover and this will be my fifth year. It's been very little turnover. And now with the other two resignations, we may have five people this year, which for the size of our school is quite big. And, you know, to have new talented teachers like Troy and Ally and Miranda on, we can really, with the mentoring teachers that we still have here, can really, as I say, raise them the right way. Hustle guys.
Be a big difference here. But if it's got a pretty good sized school system, right?
Very big.
Very big.
Well, we welcome you and wish you well in your first year here.
Thank you.
And look forward to.
Be night and day, night and day, what you're gonna see.
On the good side.
Well, I don't know if they have that positive reinforcement over there.
No, I'm not talking against the Bedford school system. I'm just saying this is a very good.
No, I meant from big to little.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Okay, so we could take these all as, as one vote, I believe. We can say that we accept the superintendent's nominations of Troy Gondola with a BS at 41, 141, of Allison Hobbs as also as a fourth grade teacher at 39, 841, and Miranda Milton as a first grade teacher at 39, 841.
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we accept the nomination of these three new teachers. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I have no.
This is where I would generally come and shake your hands. I'll just give you a virtual high five, Troy. In the world we live in, I'm not trying to be rude.
So I guess you can stay now. Okay, yeah, congrats. Let's go on to 72, which is an update on school closing and summer programming.
Okay, so the update on summer, on school closing and summer school programming. And then I'm gonna kind of add what opening could or might look like as well. So it's, it won't be, it won't be, they really, they really work well into each other. So closing school, we now have a process where we have, obviously, we're putting class rosters together, they're moving on to the next grade. We've recognized that in closing school and with distance learning or remote learning, that some of our students at the younger grades did not achieve as much as we would have wanted them to achieve if they were here in our school. That's not, no surprise, a lot of reasons, a lot of reasons for that. So I reached out, I worked with the cohort leaders and we looked at data and we looked at how much work got done and how well was it done during remote learning. And we have a small list of kids for summer school that we normally wouldn't cater to in summer school. Their grades, next year's grades three, so Mr. Jefersko's parent, grade two. Next year's grades three through grades eight. Now, normally, we would have summer standards recovery for grades six, seven and eight, which we will have, but we normally wouldn't have those younger learners. So I reached out and there are some parents that are interested in sending their children. So we're looking at our ESY, that's our Extended School Year Special Ed Students who need summer learning per their IEP. We're gonna put that in place. We're going to offer a group for three through five, those kids that we targeted through the RTI process to could benefit from it. And then six through eight, very similar to what 3 through 5 group. That being said, excuse me, there's a ton of rules we need to follow and I think I shared them with you. I'm not gonna get into it, but the state gave guidelines for summer school, okay? So the guidelines, just like the guidelines for graduating, graduating tonight, you have to wear a mask outside, there's guideline, we're following it. So there's guidelines we need to follow to open summer school. There's a lot of them. So I have a collaborative planning team that has cohort leadership, membership from everywhere. So I got the whole school involved in that, one or two people from each cohort, administrators. And we're, we've divided out into small chairs of each area that we looked at for opening summer school. And it looks like we're gonna open on July 6th and we're gonna run it for a month. We're gonna go four days a week for three hours a day. There's things we don't know yet, though. We don't know exactly how the transportation is going to look and are they getting a temperature check in when they get off the bus? Are they wearing a mask when they get off the bus? Are they putting on a mask when they come in the building? So there's a lot of details and that's, you get bogged down in the details. So this team will plan and continue to meet moving forward till summer, till the month of June. Because they can't open a summer school until we follow, we have those guidelines met. And then a parent can say, thank you, but I really don't want my kid to participate for a number of reasons. It's a summer school, you don't have to, it's not compulsory. And it might be the COVID thing, might be too much for them to think that they want their kids around other kids and we need to respect that as well. So we, we're gonna do a lot of planning and put things in place, but I don't know, I really don't know what's gonna happen until that first day, first morning, who shows up. But we're gonna offer something. Now, that being said, that we're gonna have a summer school and it's gonna reflect the same dates and times. And we're gonna use that as a way to learn best practices to open school in September. So as I said to the staff this morning, I did my welcome back address. To me, it's kind of boot camp. We're gonna have a core group of kids and a core group of staff that are gonna figure out how to move children around the building and follow these guidelines so that when it comes time to bring back, you know, 225 kids, what does that look like? So there's, as you can imagine, there's no clear delineation on what you have to do and what it's gonna look like. Because when we bring those kids back, we gotta wait and see what COVID-19 looks like in the month of August. Is it gonna be worse? Is it gonna be better? What's it gonna be? So the goalpost keeps moving. And I will, and I told the staff, I'll take on anything and I'll take on anything with you guys because you're awesome, but please don't change the rules on me. It's like, man. So we're gonna plan for several different scenarios for opening school and that's what we're doing this week. We don't know the scenario we're gonna get. So we need to plan on several different scenarios and then we're gonna get some guidance in the summer from the state that says, if your county and your community looks like this, we suggest you do this. And we'll be able to pull up three plans. I just need time to communicate that to parents and the community and you as to which plan we might be using, but that's what we're developing this week. And I'm gonna ask the parents to be patient with me because I might, they might want to know now and I can't, I can say I'm gonna have three plans and I can tell you what the plans are when we develop them, but I don't know which one we're gonna be kind of, not forced, but recommended into using. So that's kind of the update on where we are and the work we've got ahead of us. So this is first week back for teachers, but this is, this is like the beginning of school. This is a weird year. This isn't ramping down, this is completely ramping up for a core group of us. It's a whole different feel, like the academic cycle I've done for many, many years, there's a feeling to your organization. It's completely flipped this year. It doesn't feel like June at all when you look at what we gotta do. But it's okay, they're, they're up for it, the staff is super positive, they've done a great job. And we'll have our three plans and it'll be based on the, like, one of them will be based on the remote learning plan that you approved a couple of months ago, if that's one of the plans, which we just came back from. But we need to have a remote learning plan in place if things were to get worse. And I also need an opening school plan with least restrictive environment, whatever that is. And then some hybrid between the two if we're kind of in the middle. And that's, that's what we're doing. So be a lot of interesting work. If you have any interest in any of this, let me know because we have opinions. And I was really careful with the staff. I said, I don't want to get into the national dialogue about, you know, COVID-19 or anything. This is about kids and we need to base it on science and fact and what we know. But, and I've heard from some community members, if you do this, then my kid's not coming back to school. And then other kids, people kind of ribbing me with, you know, you can hug my kid for all I care. You know, so there's, there's a lot of different opinions out there. Mr. Ross and the school aren't gonna do the opinion piece, we'll take it into account. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at what's best practice given the guidance at the time to open school. And we will be prepared. And I am gonna survey the community to find out what they think of this whole thing too. Where are you? If I build three plans, are you gonna follow any of them? If people are like, no, then I'm gonna have to go back and think of another plan, I guess. So I need that input from the community to find out where people are because people are everywhere on this. And I get it, it's their kids and they should be everywhere on this concerned about their children as, as I am and as our staff are. But at the same time, we gotta balance that with, we gotta run school. We gotta have, we gotta run school. And what does that look like? So if you want to be part of it, email me, I'll bring you into anything. You can be right on the front lines of developing what opening's gonna look like. But summer school's gonna be, to me, summer school's gonna be the place we're gonna learn. It's gonna tell us a lot. That month of July is huge. It's gonna tell us a lot about how kids will be, how staff will be, how the building will be to open in late August. Any questions, concerns about that piece?
My biggest thing is, do you know if 80% of the kids are gonna be fine and go right in, you know, to their next grade? Have they really been learning? Have you known they've been learning?
I get what you're asking, Mary, yeah. The transitions are gonna happen regardless of whether they come to the summer or not. We suggested that certain individual students come for the summer because it'll help them with some of the standards, proficiency-based learning that they haven't really shown that they've mastered. But they're all gonna move, we're not gonna, nobody's staying back because of remote learning. That is not happening. What'll happen is Troy will have a group of kids that move into fourth grade and there's a transition meeting happening this week between all teachers sending kids to the next as to what they need. If they come to summer school, here's what they need. If they don't come to summer school, if they still need this, find a way of doing it when you see them again in the fall. So those transition meetings, they happen Thursday and Friday this week, about every individual student transferring into the next grade. We usually do that anyway, but we haven't been together. So we have to do it in a, we have to do it differently this year have to do it differently this year, because we haven't been together.
Any other questions?
I think it's good that you've got multiple plans and that, you know, you're going to wait and see what the, basically what the climate is like when school gets ready to pick which one will fit. Hopefully the kids will get to come.
Right, and I hope, I think surveying the community is a great idea to, to reach out and see, like you said, you'll get a lot of opinions, but I think you'll, ultimately you'll have a majority opinion in some.
We got great feedback on our survey on remote learning. Two weeks, three weeks into that, we sent out a survey and.
I was glad you did that survey.
Weird, more than any other survey, I think we've ever set out, we got great feedback on that. And it was good feedback, but it was also some feedback that said, hey, you might want to think about. And that was, that's why you send surveys out. Yeah.
I know that Sanford just sent their survey out to the parents.
Okay.
I, I kind of feel like it's a little early to say, what do you want to do in September? Because you don't know what July and August look like. I think July, you know, the end of July, early August is kind of a better indicator of.
They weren't asking, how do you think your kid did this past year? They did?
Yeah. I don't know. I didn't look at the survey yet. I just know that they were asking for people's opinions about.
They had asked if the kids were able to go through the programs easily and if not, what were the difficulties? And just like what you were talking about, should it be here, at school sometimes or should it be continued, should we continue to do remote learning early, too early?
It's that second part.
It was a long survey, yeah.
I bet it was. It's that second part that we're grappling with now, is what does reopening look like and where are parents on that? But you're right, with the timing.
Well.
Timing is important.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you have to consider too is that, you know, it seems like every week something different comes down from the state that are actually not choices, don't give you choices, they give you mandates and whatever comes down from the Department of Education and those, we, we have to conform to those as well. So you have to make whatever they send down fit into the scenarios that you have. And that's why it's kind of.
Well, yeah, she carved out York County, Cumberland County. It was wrong for.
No, if you're going to come.
What do you do if a kid has a cold?
You've got to bring a certificate from the state.
We've got a whole, we need a checklist for that too. It's, it's, it's a checklist-driven system when it comes to symptoms. And Carol has been an ace. Carol has been right on key with all the nurses in the state, she's on a committee and she's been, it's great, she has. It's great to have different people doing different things. I can get anything I need from Carol, because she's got the most updated information and I don't even have to look for it.
No, but when, you know, you say, not opinion, but.
Science.
My opinion is science-driven, because when I see the age group.
Yeah.
Every day, when I saw who died, it was, you know, a lot of elderly, a lot in nursing homes. It wasn't kids going to school.
And there's even new information.
So, that's science.
Yeah, there's new information about asymptomatic people actually being carriers or not. So see, we're learning.
Yeah.
So in August, we may learn more that says, oh boy, this really takes us off the hook for this, this part of the checklist. That's my hope. My hope is the more science we learn, the checklist gets smaller and smaller. In my world, that makes opening way more reasonable. I don't control any of that.
So we've gotten rid of every other disease in the world and everybody's dying.
Well, that's the thing, it's not going to go away.
Yeah, we haven't heard anybody dying from the regular flu now, so that's pretty good.
Never mind the flu, I'm talking about appendicitis and.
Cancer.
I mean, heart disease.
It's just COVID.
In 20 years, when they do the history stuff, that's when you're going to find out the numbers or whatnot, who really went by what, you know.
And the strains are going to change too. I mean, it's not going.
Oh, I know, but I'm not, I'm just talking, they never tell me about anything else, except that I can't.
Well, it's just not newsworthy, their, their focus is the COVID stuff, so, but to bring it all back together, it's good to have.
Multiple plans.
Couple different plans going and options, so that you're that much closer when you get to make the decision.